I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, October 9th, 2019, and we will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, let's see, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
I have a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion is carried and we will begin report boards thinking.
So we had our first SLAC meeting on October 1st and our focus for it was finding your why and finding out a goal and then putting passion towards it. So I presented a workshop on this topic and we did different activities to identify our traits, find ways to accomplish goals, and set goals for the future. So overall, it was a very fun day and I'm very excited for our next meeting. Although, I've also been planning the Fly for a Cure Kite Festival. So we did this event two years ago and a friend and I decided to do it again. So the kite festival will be held on October 12th, this Saturday, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. at the St. Mary's Square Grounds and we will be raising awareness for blood cancers and all the proceeds will be going to LLS Pediatrics Children's Initiative. So I would love for you all to attend. We're gonna have a lot of fun activities like kite flying, games, food, entertainment, and we're also gonna have a recognition ceremony. So, that's all.
So last week, I had the privilege of going with one of the first grader, first grade classes from Park Hall Elementary School. The teacher's Kelly Chase, I've gone with her, her class before on field trips. And I just really enjoy when she asked me to go along. We went to Greenwell State Park and so I had charge of several young ladies in my group. They were a lot of fun, they were real sweet. When we were there, we learned about different types of plants, how things were, you know, how to sort things as far as same or different, did we want to do it by color or type or size? And then we had to go around to the other tables and guess how those group, you know, did their sorting, also about different animals in the forest. Walked down to the water, saw some fish jumping up and birds. It was, the kids loved it and it was a lot of fun. The other thing that they did is they got a little wooden, I guess like a doll, I guess you would say. It was just small and they got to color it to look like themselves. And then we went into the woods and they had to make a little shelter for their little mini-me's. And that was a blast to see the creativity that the students came up with. You know, and yes, I needed to go home and take a nap with Mr. Thomas. But really had a wonderful time and I really appreciate, like I said, Kelly Chase is a wonderful teacher and you know, those, those kids are, you know, just blessed to have such a, you know, a great person working with them. So, that was my week.
I attended the town hall meeting in Lusby with Dr. Kerwin. It was last week, it was very interesting discussion. It was at an Episcopal church and I would argue, there's probably 120 people there. Almost every, every seat was filled. I really won't, don't want to get into the details, but it was very compelling presentation by Dr. Kerwin on the needs for additional funding for school systems. Also, I attended the Blessing of the Fleet and what was unique is it's the first time I had a chance to go over and visit the lighthouse. I don't know if, it's not open that often, but I went up, climbed up to the, to the top, top of the building, it was very impressive and that's about all I did.
Let's see, Monday, we had our school safety advisory council meeting. We talked a lot about metrics and data collection and how to evaluate the grant funding that has been given to all of the counties through MSDE. And I guess, you know, to make sure that, that it's at its highest and best use and that, you know, that the school systems are using it in order to prop up their, their school safety plans. We also had a review of all of the school resource officer training that was done over the summer. So I will have to give kudos once again to the superintendent and sheriff because very clearly, as was evident in the presentation, not all of the counties have a adequate working memorandum of understanding between the school system and the sheriff's department or whatever their county agency is that, that supplies the school resource officers in order to govern that. They gave some instances where there were school resource officers that showed up for training and they're like, "We don't have you on the list for whatever county." So they called the school system and they're like, "We don't have that person there." And he's like, "Well, I've been there for three years." So very clearly, there seems to be some disconnect in other counties, but that does not happen here. So out of that, they have identified different, and let me just back up. This didn't just include school resource officers, it was also any, the school security employees that were also, that were required to be trained. So they did face a lot of challenges because they were 10-month employees. So we had to do extra pay for extra duty in order to have them attend the training. And then they also came up and presented us with a lot of the items that they need to update the training. One of the larger things that did fall out of it was that, I guess, through the course of the week and the training that they had with, with the SROs and the, the school security employees, is that they are thinking of having some type of joint training between administrators of the school system and the, work with me, whoever is in charge of the SROs, whatever, whatever bucket that falls into in a sheriff's or police department. Because in some places, there was a disconnect between what the sheriff's office or the police department was understanding what was happening in the schools and what the SRO's role was and what the administration assumed what the SRO's role was. And once again, all comes back to that overlying MOU, which they found was deficit in several counties throughout the state. So hats off to Scott and Tim Cameron for continuing to look at that document, have that relationship and make sure that, you know, that we're covered. Then they also talked about school bus safety. They're going to their, they were kind of polling people to roll out, I guess MSDE does a one-day, one violation on school bus transportation and how many citations and things are issued. They're looking at stepping that up, heads up, Mr. Thompson, to do it more than just once a year, more than just one data point, one day data collection. So they were questioning how heavy the lift would be for school systems or someone to provide that information. So when they call and ask you for that feedback, please respond. So, that was about it. Our next meeting isn't until December, so more, and by that time, we'll know, you know, if any more money's coming down from any point in time and I think that they would have evaluated all of the current plans that are in place. So, that's all I have.
Thank you. I had a wonderful time at Lenningtown High School at the Battle at Breton, which was the Battle of the Marching Bands. There were 12 marching bands from Maryland and Virginia. They included Patuxent High School, Chopticon, Great Mills, Calvert-Haie, La Plata High, Thomas Stone, Severna Park, Arondo High, Falls Church High, Thomas Wooton High, Loudoun County High, and Lenningtown High School. I was there to present the awards to the participants and it was a colorful event. This marching bands work in precision. I want to thank the band boosters, the marching bands, the band directors, sponsors, volunteers, adjudicators, and it was a fun family event for everyone. And the stadium was packed and it was a good time. It started at 3 o'clock and it ended about 8:30 at night, so it was a wonderful program. Usually, our schools go to other schools to perform, but this time, 12 bands came to Lenningtown High School. So it was a wonderful way to raise money, bring recognition to the importance of marching band and to showcase our talents in, in the southern Maryland region. Thank you.
I, along with some of my colleagues, attended the Maryland Association of Boards of Education Fall Conference that was held last week in Annapolis. We received training there, there were some wonderful keynote speakers. But I think for me, even beyond that was, the highlight for me was the opportunity, which is very rare, to be able to go up into the dome of the Capitol in Annapolis, of the State House. And it was 188 stairs to climb up a rather narrow and dimly lit rotunda tower, but it, the, the view was incredible and just to know how long the building had been in existence and to know that we had the opportunity to be up there was, was worth the, I shall say, breathtaking climb. So I appreciate the opportunity to go and receive training and all of the experiences we have while we're there. So, that's all.
That was really great and I love the, the recognition this year for their excellence in education was Dr. Nancy Grasmek. It just, she's just, she's just such a, such an incredibly accomplished and poised professional. She just reminds us everything that's wonderful in public education. And even though she has had a very long and storied career, she continues. And to hear her speak was really, I think, quite a treat as well. You know, we had SLAC, I went to a couple of soccer games, we went to the conference. Dr. Ralph Goncalves, who's the Prime Minister of St. Vincent and the Grenadines, came to Lenningtown Middle School, it was very interesting meeting that gentleman. We have things coming up this weekend and as Ms. Ori has already said, we have the Fly for a Cure coming up. Please come out and take a look at that. This was the last Battle of the Bands, so we've had a Great Mills Battle of the Band, a Chopticon Battle of the Band, a Lenningtown Battle of the Band, and we represented at all of them, they are really quite incredible. So if you're looking for something to do this Saturday, go fly a kite.
It's a great letter.
Before you go fly a kite, you can go to Chopticon High School for their varsity football game. They will be receiving for the second time, the trophy for the national champions of touchdowns against cancer. So what schools do, high schools do is they sign up and they pledge a certain amount of money for every touchdown that they have in the month of September. I think they had like nine touchdowns. They raised $7,500, that is, they lead the nation, so they're gonna be recognized and receive a trophy for it on a Saturday. Over $500,000 was raised for St. Jude's, just in the month of September through this initiative and it's really, it's really quite something. So, we'll be there. Next week, we have our second town hall meeting. Our first town hall meeting, we were talking about educational equity and access and the, the language that we're bringing, we're gonna be bringing back before the board. Next week, we're gonna have a town meeting about drug prevention. We're gonna have a panel of, of four subject matter experts. We're gonna have a conversation about risk-taking behavior, what's going on in St. Mary's County, what's going on with our students, results of them, the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And I'm assuming we're gonna have a pretty active conversation about particularly vaping. So please come out. It is at the Forest Center, the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center, on Tuesday, October 15th, from 6:00 until 7:30. A great opportunity to talk about what's going on with the lives of our kids. And with that, thank you.
All right, let's see, recognitions, that's first up. Mr. Thompson, National School Bus Safety Week.
And he's calling with an assist from Dr. Walker. We've got a whole bunch of things going on, PowerPoint presentation and a video.
Last second audible. All right, good morning, board members. I'm here today to recognize the week of October 21st, October 25th, which is the national, designated the National School Bus Safety Week and also being designated as the Bus Driver Appreciation and Bus Attendant Appreciation Week here in St. Mary's County. So the theme this year for National School Bus Safety Week is My School Bus, the safest form of student transportation. And we have a short video about school bus safety. So school bus safety, it's always an important factor every year. You know, our buses reach to the farthest corners of the county, picking up students to bring them in, to meet their educational opportunities. We'd like to recognize, you know, I'd like to recognize the Maryland Center for School Safety because they really, over the last year, they've really done a large job to emphasize school bus safety, increased emphasis, if you see their Twitter site, I mean, they're almost constantly, weekly and definitely monthly, posting something about school bus safety items. They had an example tweet that I put up here, is when the lights flash in bus stops, you stop to, please do not pass or go around the bus. We all have the task of keeping our children safe at the school bu, at school and at the bus stop. So this is a poster that they sent out, the Maryland Center for School Safety, kind of describing the laws in Maryland, and the $570 fine and three points on your license if you do get a citation for passing a school bus. So it is hefty. So also going on, the same week, is school bus safety is in St. Mary's County, our School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week, which is October 25th, the first through October 25th, as we stated. So I just want to read a couple of things, we have a couple of pictures up here and then we'll bring up our school bus drivers and the bus attendants that are attending today to read a proclamation. So school bus drivers and school bus attendants and their school buses are essential for allowing many students to access their educational opportunities. School bus staff play a vital role in ensuring a successful school day and a successful school year. School bus staff will wear many hats while transporting students to and from school and it can be very challenging. In the current District Administrator Magazine, it's quoted to say, "Bus drivers have a challenging job and no other career are you expected to manage the behavior of children with your back turned while driving, sometimes in pretty awful weather, like snow and ice." To add to these challenges right now, there's a massive shortage of CDL bus drivers in our nation and this includes school bus drivers. In Maryland, you might have seen a number of articles or in our local area about the shortages and the ca, and the issues it's causing with school systems in our area, Virginia, nationwide. You know, this has an extreme effect on our students and our school day. So within the last week, we just even had a report stating that unemployment has reached 3.5%, which is the lowest in 50 years. So school bus drivers, they have other options in the CDL, with CDL opportunities that even have some less responsibilities. But our school bus drivers and school bus attendants, they choose this profession so that they can provide the essential service to our students. They make connections with the students they transport. Some of our drivers will transport the same student all the way from pre-K to 12th grade. So they see them grow and they're part of their life. We cannot put a price on this dedication, this commitment, that our school bus drivers and school bus attendants bring every day and that's a reason why we want to recognize them during the week of October 21st through October 25th. I do, I have one more thing I do want to read real quick before we bring them up. So this is a letter we just received this week, one of our bus drivers. And she's actually here, Ms. Marilyn, I don't know if you got this yet, Marilyn, so I'll put you on the spot. But this is from a parent. She said, "I want to send some positive thoughts for my daughter's bus driver. I'm not sure who to send this to, but I was hoping I'd get it to the right person. My daughter rides bus 518 and I can honestly say, I feel blessed to have such a wonderful bus driver for the last five years. Ms. Marilyn is kind and truly cares for the students on her bus. I believe she sees them and has her own and I know that as soon as my daughter gets on the bus, she is in good hands. I can only imagine how difficult and stressful her job is, yet when she picks up my daughter, she is so cheerful, ensuring a positive start to her day. She watches out for them so carefully, even keeping an eye on the bus when there's an oncoming car, ensuring the car comes to a stop before letting them off the bus. I know that she would do anything to keep them safe while in her car. Ms. Marilyn is an exceptional bus driver and we will truly miss having her next year. I only wish they were more like her." So that was a letter we just received from a parent and we have numerous other letters we've received. You know, and while we get concerns, you know, that the bus is too early, the bus is too late, different other things, you know, we do get a lot of things about the compliments for our bus drivers. They do an exceptional job, many of them will drive on days when they're not feeling well, when maybe many other employees in other jobs would take off, but they are there for our kids and, you know, it's something that we need as a school system and the students need to access their educational opportunities. So with that, we'll bring up our attendees today to read the proclamation. And Dr. Smith, I'd ask you to come up and we can read a couple of lines here.
So ladies, if you wouldn't mind coming up there, just stand up here. And this is, this one.
Was that me too?
What if we all go over there and we don't happen to have a handheld mic? Is there anyone who can get a handheld mic? As I'm reading this and then after, I'd like you to, each one of you to introduce yourself and tell us how long you've been working with St. Mary's County Public Schools and with the system. I want to reach you on the spot, okay? But I'll read, I'll read these first, okay? The first is the proclamation from the governor for School, School Bus Safety Week. "It is fitting that Maryland citizens recognize the 7,258 yellow school bus transport daily, 641, 239,000 students to Maryland schools representing 74% of the total student population. And whereas Maryland has 9,008 school bus drivers employed by local school systems that must achieve special training prior to earning their school bus driver's endorsement issued by the Maryland Department of Motor Vehicle Administration, with an additional six hours of in-service training given during the school year. And during the year, these fleets cover 125,565,000 miles and operate in all types of weather conditions and have an outstanding safety record despite the ever-present danger of cars running their warning lights. And Maryland, whereas Maryland is pleased to join the nation in recognizing school bus safety in all of our 23 counties in Baltimore City and the hard work that our school bus drivers do keeping Maryland's students safe. Now therefore, I, Lawrence J. Hogan, Jr., Governor of the State of Maryland, do hereby proclaim October 21st through the 25th, 2019, as School Bus Safety Week in Maryland and do commend this observance to all of our citizens." That's a lovely proclamation. And we also have a resolution from our board as well. "Whereas the week of October 21st through 25th, 2019, has been designated as National School Bus Safety Week in the school systems across our great nation. And whereas school bus safety is an integral part of our educational program and whereas the efforts of our school bus drivers and the school bus attendants in transporting our students safely to and from school each day are recognized for their importance, now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes this week of October 21st through the 25th, 2019, as School Bus Driver and School Bus Attendant Appreciation Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools and that all school staff and students are encouraged to recognize their school bus drivers and school bus attendants for safely transporting St. Mary's County Public School students each day. Signed today, October 9th, 2019, by all board members." So, thank you very much for all you do every single day. Did we get a microphone? We do have a microphone. Indeed, the mic, the microphone does indeed work. What I'd like you to do is I'd like you to, and I'm sorry, I'd like you to introduce yourself and tell us how long you've been driving for St. Mary's County Public Schools or attending for St. Mary's County Public Schools.
My name is, my name is Lynn Sullivan and I'm in my ninth year driving now.
My name is Wanda Matthews and I've been driving for 30 years.
Tammy Wink, 11 years.
Mary Walsh, attendant for 11 years.
Tina Lawrence, attendant for four years.
Marilyn Savoy, 28 years.
So that's over 80... So that's, so that's over 80 years of service to our kids, every single day, driving them to school and probably represents millions of miles covering the roads in St. Mary's County. And you do so every single day and you do so graciously and gratefully. You appreciate your kids, you have to love what you do because otherwise, it would be the most impossible job ever to drive a bus and know what's going on behind you. I just want to say, on behalf of the Board of Education and myself, thank you very much.
Can you stay for a picture? Okay, great, thank you. I practiced for a week before this meeting.
You should have sent me an email.
Good morning, board members.
Good morning.
As has been said, once again, another October and another Red Ribbon Week. And I've asked some of our community partners to be here this morning. I'll ask them to come up now, so from the Health Department, Mr. Chris Shea, Mr. Marilyn Kreis, I am from the Sheriff's Office, Lieutenant Steve Simons, and Sergeant Todd Fleener. So as you know, our commitment, our dedication and resolve to continually focus on this issue goes on and on and on. Every year, we still do their program with the Sheriff's Office and we do several other community events, they're actually participating in the Superintendent's Town Hall next week. The Health Department has been a tremendous partner for us. We've called upon them again this year, once again, with the struggle with vaping and we are gonna, we are putting a major focus on that. And we're gonna continue. I've been doing this 39 years and Red Ribbon's been around that long, I think, just about. So we're committed to this and the purpose today is to have a resolution read and declare National Red Ribbon Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools the last week in October, so Dr. Smith, if you would. "Whereas preventing substance abuse and other risk behaviors by school-aged youth remains a priority for St. Mary's County Public Schools. And whereas a key strategy in substance abuse prevention is educating parents, students, and the community at large on substance abuse issues and the resources available in our community to help prevent this high-risk behavior. And whereas the United States Department of Justice and the Drug Enforcement Administration has designated October 23rd, 2019, through October 31st, 2019, to be designated as natural, as natural, as national, naturally, Red Ribbon Week. Red Ribbon Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the ongoing community partnership with the St. Mary's County Sheriff's Office and the St. Mary's County Health Department to provide drug abuse resistance education, dare, and other educational programming in all of our schools and local activities coordinated to support nationwide efforts for continued awareness through National Red Ribbon Week. Thus, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County declares October 23rd, 2019, through October 31st, 2019, to be National Red Ribbon Week in all of our St. Mary's County Public Schools. The Board encourages all students and supporting adults to learn what they can do to prevent substance abuse and make a personal commitment to the mission of the Red Ribbon Week campaign, striving towards a drug-free America. Signed on this day, October 9th, 2019, by all board members." So, thank you very much for what you do every single day. I look forward to our town hall meeting next week. I hope that we have hundreds of people come out to engage in the conversation because we need to have hundreds of people come out to engage in the conversation because obviously, this is something that impacts every single one of us in our daily lives. And just, we couldn't do it without the partnership that we have with each one of them. So just thank you very much. And now could we get a photo? Wonderful.
Oh, I'm sorry, we're gonna break for five minutes of pictures.
Great. Great.
Comment. All right, so may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. And then our first action item is Ms. Howell with easement authorization.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Ms. Howell.
So, good morning. This morning I am here to talk about authorization for the superintendent of schools to have approval and authority to approve state highway administration easements for current and future projects. This would be very similar to an easement agreement that you already have for approval for the superintendent to sign SMECO easements, which was done by the board on September twenty-ninth of two thousand and nine. And it allows us to do electrical service to new projects, which prevents delays in construction projects. This would similarly allow the state highway to advance their projects without delay. We currently submit them to you as a consent agenda item. These easements would include temporary entry agreements on our property to do construction. Those projects typically are ADA improvements at the junction of an SMCPS property with a state-owned property, and we're talking entryways, sidewalks, crosswalks, and when they want to change out a signal improvement for a light. We currently have two that we have recently done. One was for Great Mills High School in July of two thousand and eighteen for the entrance. And then one we just recently got approved for Leonardtown High School in August. We have one right now. We are working with them on a project at Letty Marshall Den and we're coordinating that with the improvements that we want to make as well. So we appreciate your consideration for an approval of this agenda item as presented.
I have no questions.
Where are they, are they widening the road down by Letty Marshall Den or are they just making a new entrance in there?
They're looking at, what they have historically do, if they're working on a project along the way, they'll look at our project. So right now, they currently have the Route Five project that they're working on, which is Leonardtown High School's improvement. And they are looking to make some improvements to the entrance at our school in particular. They were not aware at that time that we were doing a project as well, so we are in the process of coordinating that effort.
So do you coordinate it with the state then, with what, when you're doing an improvement to ma- make sure that they're not coming behind to do something different?
Right, so our project hadn't advanced far enough yet to engage them, so they engaged us about a project that they had first. When we made them aware of our project, they've now got their engineers talking with us. So it was just a timing issue of they got there before we did, in terms of our project. One thing I should have mentioned is that Mr. Law and I have worked out language that we use as a standard now. So all of the easements that we do with state highway have the same language. They're very aware of what ours is and they accept ours because they have a standard document they use. They in turn now are using our documentation on their letterhead.
Okay, thank you.
I have no questions, thank you.
I don't have any questions. And I just want to be clear, we're not specifically approving the one at Letty Dent. We're just giving them the authority to issue easements through state highway from this point going forward.
Right.
Right?
And that is the one we currently have going on.
Right, right, that was just an example, so it'll be the same as the one that we have with SMECO. So, okay, can I move Ms. Washington?
It streamlines the process greatly so that the superintendent can sign the authorization. Thank you.
Well, in many instances, they're, by the time they get to us with that easement, they're ready to go. They're ready for boots on the ground, so this will definitely streamline the process for the state.
I don't have any questions. I would just ask that if there are going to be projects, even if state highway projects that go on in the front of any of our schools that's gonna affect ingress or egress, it would be nice to have a communication update, just so we're aware of it. So if anyone in the community asks us what's going on, we will be knowledgeable and can answer.
We will gladly do that.
Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
I moved that the Board of Education grant the superintendent of schools the authority to approve and authorize Maryland state highway administration easements for current and future state projects affecting St. Mary's County Public Schools' properties.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Thank you very much. All right, Ms. McCourt. And our September financial report update.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So September is your first report as we want to make sure that we include first encumbrances for payroll of the fiscal year before we present anything to. So on the revenue side, out of the two hundred and twenty-two million dollar budget, year-to-date, we have received revenues of forty-six point nine million dollars, representing twenty-one percent of our budget, so we are on target on the revenues. On the expenditures side, I'd like to point out a couple of things. First, the instructional salaries and wages, about midway down on the screen. We have an available balance of four point eight million dollars with ninety-four percent of our budget encumbered. I wanted to explain that four point eight million dollars so that there's no confusion. We have encumbered all of our base salaries, however, unencumbered during the course of the fiscal year are substitute salaries as well as our EPED, which encompasses the majority of that four point eight million dollars. And then as well on fixed charges, I wanted to point out that our group health, out of the twenty-four million dollar budget, we have encumbered twenty-four point five million dollars, representing ninety-nine point five percent. That is our current projection for this fiscal year. And then finally, the bottom line, we have current encumbrances of one hundred and sixty-five point five million dollars. Year-to-date encumbrances and expenditures of one hundred and ninety-seven point six million dollars, representing eighty-eight point nine eight percent of our budget. Your FY twenty financial statements will be presented at your next board meeting. Are there any questions? Any questions?
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we will have Ms. Hunt with NAVYANCE.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I'm here today to give you an update on NAVYANCE. We are in our second year of implementation. So with NAVYANCE, what we have implemented this year in our initiatives is to roll it out to our middle schools. So NAVYANCE will, activities will be occurring in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. This helps us to complete that career development and career awareness process where we are developmentally, beginning appropriately in sixth grade, carrying it through, adding to their electronic portfolio that will carry through twelfth grade. We've also rolled out parent access to their student NAVYANCE account, which I'm very happy to see. The purpose for this is to allow parents to begin to look at their student results and engage in informed discussions about some of the assessment results, survey results, college searches, scholarship searches. So we want them involved with the tool as well. And then EDOCs, which represents electronic documentation. That is our online college application process, has now gone to all electronics. To help our students engage with the NAVYANCE product, our staff actually have a scope and sequence so that we push into classrooms and then help students to complete these activities. In sixth grade, they will complete their learning-style inventory so that they become very aware of how they best learn. And then those skills can be applied as they progress through middle school and high school. They'll also create an academic goal because we want them to begin to engage in that process where they are thinking about how their academics begin are either important to them, how they apply to some of their life goals. In seventh grade, they'll complete the Career Cluster Finder survey and favorite a career cluster because we want them to begin the search of broadly understanding how careers are clumped and how to begin that exploration process. In eighth grade, they'll complete the Do What You Are Assessment, favorite two careers, explore Road Trip Nation, and Road Trip Nation is an archive of interviews, about five thousand interviews with the top leaders in industries across this nation and internationally. And they're also interviews with folks who are the top entrepreneurs because we want them to not only engage with what they're, the activities, we want them to be able to participate in an interview-type basis with leaders. And then they'll complete a reflection activity. In high school, in ninth grade, they'll complete the Career Interest Profile Survey and favorite several careers. And that interest profile survey really is based upon the Holland codes because we know that if students began their search based upon their interest and their strengths, then they are most likely to begin to explore careers that pull upon their strengths. And that indicates longevity, it will help to build a life career of really enjoying what they're doing. In tenth grade, they'll complete the Strength Explorer Assessment and create an academic goal and then begin building their resume because we want them reflecting on all their experiences through high school and capturing that in a resume. That then turns into teacher recommendations, it then turns into their college essay, or they have a resume when they go into trade schools or their first day applying for a job out of high school. Eleventh grade, they'll complete the Supermatch College Search. Add colleges to the colleges I'm thinking about list and update, continue to update their resume. We now have a tool with Supermatch College to really evaluate colleges apples to apples across over twenty different criteria where students are thinking about engaging what type of post-secondary learning experience do they want. And they're engaging those, their parents in those discussions as well. In twelfth grade, they'll search for scholarships. For the first time, we now have access, parents and students, to search locally, in the state, and nationally for scholarships that would match their SAT scores, AT, ACT scores, their interests, the programs that they're interested. So it begins to help take this search, narrow it into a tool that makes it a much more effective process for parents. And then they'll walk through the college application process and finalize their resume. Parent access, to go back to parents, when they sign on to NAVYANCE, this is the screen that they'll be seeing. And it's actually a reflection of what their student sees. So you'll see a welcome message and that message will change depending upon what counselors want to push out to students, what the career liaison want to remind them of, different events. Important-to-do tasks, each year in that scope and sequence, they will see what's been assigned to them that they need to complete that year. In my favorite section, you'll see colleges that the student is thinking about, that they might be applying to, careers that they are interested in about. And so parents can begin to engage in those discussions with their students as they see the results. And then what's new, here you'll see that the college liaisons will actually invite colleges to come to the schools and visit. And so they're constantly pushing out to students when a particular university or college will be at their school and so that they're able to come down during that time. EDOCs, the college application online process, what that does for us and for students is they're able to identify active college applications. It identifies it for your registrars and your counselors. They write off the same screen, can request electronic transcripts. They don't have to submit a piece of paper, they don't have to make sure the paper gets from one person to the next person. It's done electronically with a click of a button on the same screen. They can also request a teacher recommendation letter. So they'll just click a button, it rolls down the teachers that are in the school and they can check which teachers they want a recommendation letter from. An email then, the system sends it straight to the teacher. The teacher is aware through their system email that a recommendation letter has been requested. That teacher can also see on her table or his table when the due date is, what students have requested, what colleges they want the letter to go to. And they can go into the student's resume and other assessment pieces to begin to write a letter that is very reflective of some of the activities that they have done. And then the student and the parent and counselors can monitor the transcript process. So what's happening, there are pieces that are being built and this is all a part of the bundling of that transcript. So you have the transcript, you have the recommendation letters, you have the documents the counselors must complete. And you can track how, when each are added to the bundle and then the counselor, the registrar hits send and then it is electronically sent to the college. And parents can track when that happens. To support parents and students, we have done class presentations. We've done parent presentations at each of our high schools, talking to them about the online college application process. And we've, in working with Barrett Brooks, built a NAVYANCE landing page. And here is just a snapshot, this is under the Student Services website. And it has a login access right there for parents. It describes what NAVYANCE is in terms of self-discovery, career exploration, and that postgraduate planning process. It offers a variety of information in terms of what the assessments are, the scope and sequence, the activities that they'll be doing, and aids them, helps them if they need assistance in logging in. So this has been a busy year, we really love this product. One of the things you don't see on the screen that NAVYANCE is building out is we're looking in the spring where they're going to be really targeting students who may not be going to a four-year college, but instead want to research trade schools. They want to research internships out into businesses in the community, in the state, and nationally. So they're building that piece out for our students that are looking in that direction for their future. It's a very responsive company, I'm very pleased with the product. I think, board, I just thank you so much for supporting this. I think you've done a great benefit to our parents and our students. Any questions? No questions?
Do you find that the parents are accessing the NAVYANCE?
I have not looked likely to see how many have accessed, but after the presentations, I had lots of emails that were asking different questions about the product, so I believe they are accessing it.
Is there any way for you to find out, like, like the students access it in school, correct?
Yes.
And then do the parents get a different, I guess, code or whatever to get in?
Yes, they have their own, I guess, would be point of entry or access that's tied to their email and their password. It all ends up at the student's account. Students access through, are clever, through, so through their school system email. So I believe that I can run a report to see how many parents have accessed.
I mean, it would be nice to know that, you know, are parents accessing it? And if not, like say if there's like a lower percentage, why aren't they, do they not know about it? Do they not know how to access it, just to try to get more people to participate in using it? I do think that, you know, like when, you know, we were helping my son look for a college, it, it's really hard to compare colleges equally because, I mean... It, it's really hard to compare colleges equally because, I mean, you just don't know. You can look at the price, you could compare that, or what, you know, the, like say the class size. But I think that's a real good idea to be able to, you know, pull up colleges and say, okay, this is how they are equal, or how are they different? I think that's a, you know, really good idea. So, thank you.
You mentioned some colleges coming to the schools, is that correct?
Yes.
Are you seeing more and more of that?
We see an ease of where in the past our career liaisons had to reach out to colleges and try to coordinate reaching that representative to have them come and visit. With Naviance, your universities and colleges are used to going on to the site and just clicking the dates that they'll be there. So it's a little easier in having them register in terms of, are there more? I don't have that data, but I know that, as you could see, they are signing up. And this is a product that they're using with, across the state. There's only three districts in the state that don't currently use Naviance. So universities are accustomed to coming to the school and visiting and registering through Naviance.
The reason I ask is that some colleges are having difficulty in enrollment. Our own Saint Mary's College, I was told, the enrollment is down. And I was just curious if they're marketing, you know, like, you know, they're providing a service. Are they out there marketing their wares?
I, I don't know from the perspective of Saint Mary's College is in terms of their marketing. I wouldn't be able to answer that question. But they are always invited to the college fair that we have and they are always invited to come to our high schools and speak to students.
Oh, thank you.
So to your question, Rita, we did get an email as a parent that welcomed you to Naviance to tell you about it and what your login code is. But I guess, so when this came in from me, and I know what it is, I just, I looked at it and then set it aside. And the way the email is written, I don't know if, and I don't know if it came from Naviance or if it came from the school system, but I don't know if you're going to reach a lot of parents who aren't focused on their children after high school. And I'm talking about-
Especially middle school students.
Right. So it's just, it's, I don't, I'm not doing a very good job of getting what I went to across. But for, for those parents who have never gone to college or didn't understand the process, to me, this is a very daunting email, right? Because there's no, there's no assistance as to where, I mean, I can call you for help, but there's no, there's no push from the guidance counselors to get it out to the parents. Like, I'm saying, like, maybe it needs to be on, on the school websites in the, in the weekly principals newsletters, you know? I mean, we're, if you, if I have a student who has never been to college and, or who wants to go to college and I'm a parent who has never been to college, I'm going to be like, oh my God, I need help. And that's where I think I would rely on the guidance counselors to do that and to help and push that down. And I don't see that right now coming out of, of my high school. You know, like, this was the only email that I had about it. I only knew about it because we've talked about it and we budgeted for it. So I think the kids probably know about it because I know my daughter uses it. But I don't know if, she doesn't tell me what she's using it for or how often she uses it. So in order for it to be completely successful and to get through the equity lens and everything else, I think we need to take a step forward and somehow get it in the hands and make it a little bit more, hey, get a computer and log in with this ID because we've signed you up. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And we'll continue. We've done parent presentations. We'll do more parent presentations in the spring. I know that the schools did push out the PowerPoint and information to parents on their sites that they're using after the presentation.
But the hits, but the hits aren't there. You know what I mean? So it, you know, the, I mean, I-
If you put it on like the Chopticon or Grape Mills-
They do the-
Homepage.
You get the smar, right?
That has it on there.
It's on there, but it's just, it's not on there all the time. Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, we'll just-
But I mean, have it as one of the areas you can click-
Right.
And go right to there and then put in your log.
And maybe, and maybe once it starts in, and I think part of the challenge is too, is that it's just new, right? So no one else has gone through really and registered for college and used this whole process. So if we, and then my second question was, how are we getting the guidance counselors involved in the middle school more involved with those sixth and seventh graders as they start building their profiles?
They actually go and do the activities.
Okay.
So the activities are all done by the counselors.
Right. So, and I think that's great because then that helps, then that will help the student navigate. And then, you know, if they do talk to their parents about what happened in school that day, they're like, oh, hey, great, you know, this is what we did. And then, you know, it can get that conversation going. But I'm just, I'm looking at, like, you know, when we go, there's so much assistance when we have the historically back Black Colleges College Fair, right? There's so much assistance for those parents. And maybe we just need to make sure that we push that assistance to those same parents with this program so they're aware of it as, you know, as well.
I would like to-
Because they might not be getting it. Go ahead.
I would like to add that, like, last year when I did this, the counselors didn't do a very good job of explaining what exactly it does. And I just found out a lot of that, you could like put your transcript on it. So maybe if they do a better job at communicating it to the kids, then they'll be more likely to actually tell their parents. So, yeah. And also, are we going to be doing it more often? Because last year I only did it one day. So, or is that something you guys are working on, doing it more often throughout the year?
Yeah, the counselors will push, be pushing in to the grade levels. Once, ninth grade will be once a year or however long it takes to complete the process. We are looking and to have content teachers using this. That's something we're continuing to work for because we do want students accessing the tool more as it's naturally embedded within their various content areas. I think that if we're able to achieve that, then you'll see students logging in and using it ongoing. The difficulty is with counselors, you know, they have four hundred students apiece. And so for them to push into each grade level and each class that's within that grade level, that's, that's a huge chunk of pulling away from their, their meeting and supporting their individual students. So I can't ask them to push in two or three times at each grade level.
One of the larger conversations that we need to have, and this is probably a really good thing for Slack actually, is the whole purpose of public school is to prepare children for post-secondary success. And so while everybody's individual content and purpose and daily work is really important, what's most important ultimately that we have to enforce with our children is that you have, when you walk across the stage, you know, a plan, a way to achieve the plan, a portfolio, a credential that helps you get that. And this is a purpose-built tool that starts in sixth grade and builds all the way through. So last year was our first year and we did, it was, it was almost a, I mean, we did it with all of our high school-aged students, but it wasn't big yet. We're rolling it down to the middle school and we're, we're building, you're saying we need to build understanding, awareness, and motivation.
Right.
So that's our job this year.
Yeah.
Would you do it during one lunch, maybe once a month? Throw it out there?
Oh, I, I think that when we, when we bring this back in, that's, that's the perfect, that's the perfect time for students to come in and to work on all of this. Also, as a former English teacher, building a resume, exploring careers, writing a persuasive essay, formatting a letter properly, understanding that, that is, that does fall within the curriculum and standard and scope and sequence of English classes. Now, I know that English teachers don't want to assume the singular responsibility for this, but this is in the absolute best interest of every single individual child. So we have to take responsibility for kind of marshaling them toward that. Each one of our schools, believe it or not, has a PTA. This would be a great thing for a PTA to actually champion. Have all the parents get together, talk about how best to get this information out to other parents, the parent network. As Ms. Bailey has stated, this is brand new. And so there isn't this body of knowledge from the parents that came before to go, oh, it's Naviance. It's like this, this, and this. Right now, it's like, oh, it's-
Right, right now, everyone's like, Naviance, what is this? Like, what, like, everyone's like, why am I getting this email?
Yeah.
Right? Because it's like last year, my daughter's in tenth grade, till last year, they just took the career survey that told her she should do these twelve things.
What's she going to do? What's her top thing? Do you remember?
It was either be a lawyer and accountant.
Surprise, surprise.
So, so now, you know, this year, she's going to continue to build on that. But, you know, when she came home, I'm like, okay, well, this is really how and how you're supposed to use this.
Yes.
Right? And, but now all the other parents are like, well, why did I get this email? And why did I get this email? What, you know, and it's, I think, I'm not saying that it wasn't communicated out. I just think it, we just have to keep pushing it because-
You have to tell people the same thing at least three times before it even registers in any fashion.
Well, and if it's in an email, maybe twelve. You know, like, I mean, if it's in a newsletter. So, you know, that, we just have to keep pushing it in order to get, and I don't want to take the responsibility away from the students and put it on the parents to sign up and manage it because it truly is the student who should be taking control of their future. But at least the parents can like nag them about it.
Yes.
Multiple platforms.
Right.
Find your why, right?
I'm sorry, Mary.
I think this is an excellent program. It's brilliant. Everything's in one place. But my concern too was, how are you going to push this out to parents who are hard to reach? How do you reach the ones that may not be engaged as first, first-generation college students? How do you get it out to the students? You say the counselors will meet with the students? That's every student in every school?
They push into every classroom. And then if there's a student that's absent or there's a student that didn't complete the activity, the career, college and career liaison then comes back and scoops those students and completes the activity because it is a graduation requirement. And I can run reports on which students weren't there or didn't complete the activity. And then we have the liaison who's following up with that student.
I, I, I really like Rita's one lunch thing because I think when you get into it, and maybe this is something for you guys with Slack too, is that as you get into it, I think there's probably a lot of nuances that you might find very beneficial for you in your college search. But maybe someone who's looking at a different pathway, you know, doesn't, could build upon, or maybe they found something out that would help you. So even if you just get the kids together, that they can say, okay, this is how I used it. Or, you know, even have the counselor there to guide the discussion on the best way to use it might be helpful too.
And in speaking with that, it is being pushed in another areas for freshman seminar. Naviance is a part of freshman seminar and the activities that the teachers will do. With some of our special education groups, Naviance is going to be used as a tool to satisfy some of the requirements that they have in preparing students for post-graduation.
Do you have anything else, Kathy?
You can access this, students can access this through the school or through home, correct?
Or their phone.
Okay. And I love the fact that they are bringing, they're going to bring trades online because as I look at this, if, if I'm someone who wants to be a plumber, I'm going to look at it and go, this isn't for me, and walk away. And is it possible to link, put a link or some sort of an acknowledgement of this into Hack? Since-
Oh, yeah.
Parents can be really focused in Hack, then, that, well, you know, I, I think the more places they see it, the better they're gonna, they're, it's like, okay, I saw it there. Well, here it is again.
You need to be a link across the top, you know, how we have Hack Lunch, the-
Throw a Naviance up there though.
Right, like throw a Naviance thing up there, like right up there next to YouTube.
Right, yeah. And, and then, I love the fact-
Ms. Hunt's never coming back.
I love this product. So all these wonderful ideas, I'm going to take it and run with it.
I like it too. I mean, just from a little, I'm sorry, Kathy. But from a little, I've like, you know, you know, jumped around on it. I mean, it's, it's fantastic because you can pull everything from everywhere that you need. But, and I just, I, I think right now, it's just, it might be a little bit under the utilization rate for it. And we just need to, like, market the heck out of it to, to, you know, get it out there. All right, sorry, Kathy.
Sorry, that's, I was, my last thought is about the recommendation letters and the ability that students can just pull up a list and, and check off. On the one hand, that's really nice. On the other hand, I can foresee some difficulties with that because I look to what happened with Becca and different organizations that, in Rotary, we used to get maybe five or ten applications for our scholarship. Now that kids can just go in and go, yep, 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 then we get a hundred and fifty or more. So it's a, you know, a wealth of opportunities. I think we just need to prepare students and teachers for the idea that, you know, you can check it off, but if that means that your English teacher now has a hundred and twenty resume or, you know, letters of recommendation to write, that's not going to work. And so be prepared for how you're going to address that because I, I can foresee that's, that's going to come up and perhaps be a bit of frustration for, for teachers.
Some of that discussion, when counselors went in and met with seniors this year, explaining the process and talking to them about the letter's recommendation, they are saying, out of courtesy, you really should approach your, the teacher that you're asking. And even before you check and make the request. Teachers also have the opportunity to check that they're not going to be able to submit a particular recommendation. It goes back and notifies the student. So we're trying to build in that face-to-face, I'd like you to write a letter for me. And at that point, the teacher can say, please, can you go to Mr. So-and-so or this? Additionally, colleges really only want, some of them stipulate no more than two recommendation letters. So they're having those discussions with students, be very thoughtful, have that conversation with the teachers that you're wanting so that if you have five that you're close to, you need to be thoughtful in which you're choosing and have had that conversation that they're good to go with that. But you're right, this is going to make the process very effective. And so as we wade into this, we'll learn where the, okay, we need to address this area. So we did, we are in that learning process.
So as you add trades to this, will you also add the military?
Uh, I will follow up with the Naviance on that. I believe that's something that they're looking at.
In this area, I would certainly hope that they would. As we have, you know, every year, when they, when they ask the students who will be joining the military to stand, there's usually a fairly good representation. And I would like to make sure that however they go about it, whether they, you know, have a discussion with recruiters or, or whatever they're going to do, that, that not be overlooked.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now with that, the next board meeting will be on Wednesday, October twenty-third at six o'clock. And we are adjourned.